Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. I call this meeting of the Sioux Falls Planning Commission to Order. I would like to emphasize a couple of items. Out of courtesy for everyone, please silence all electronic devices at this time. We look forward to hearing your testimony tonight and appreciate you joining us. In an effort to have sufficient time to hear from audience members, we ask that when you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to five minutes or less to allow everyone here who would like to speak to do so. At this time, we will consider the consent agenda. Denise, please read the items on the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 1A is Planning Commission—this is approval of minutes—and it's Planning Commission Briefing of Tuesday, January 5, 2021. Item 1B is Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, January 6, 2021. Item 2A is a petition, rezone 0136452020, rezoning from the Ag Agriculture, POPUD pedestrian-oriented planned unit development, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban and RS Single Family Residential Suburban Districts to the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density District, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District, and C4 Commercial Regional Districts located north of East 69th Street and east of South Sycamore Avenue. Item 2B, petition rezone 0136472020, rezoning from the I-1 Light Industrial District to the RA3 Apartment Residential High Density District located north of West 49th Street and east of South Grange Avenue. Item 2C, petition rezone 0136552021, rezoning of the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional District located at 702 South Duluth Avenue. 2D, petition rezone 0136572021, rezoning from the AG Agriculture District to the CN Conservation, RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban, LW Live Work, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density, and C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar Districts located south of West Maple Street and west of North Marion Road. Item 2E, petition rezone 0136712021, rezoning from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the RT2 Residential Town Home Traditional District located at 209 South Spring Avenue. Item 2F, petition, conditional use 0135922020, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 1701 West Legion Drive. Item 2G, petition conditional use 0136772021, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 3900 North Cliff Avenue. Item 2H, petition conditional use 0136942021, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 1700 and 1704 West Burnside Street. Item 2I, petition subdivision plan 0136582021, preliminary subdivision plan for Jefferson Heights Edition located south of West Maple Street and west of North Marion Road. Item 3, Consent Agenda Approval.
Thank you, Denise. Is there anybody in the audience tonight that would like to speak against any of those items that were on the consent agenda? If you have an objection to any of those items, please let us know at this time.
We do have a couple of people out in the overflow room talking to the applicant for item—sorry, I should have had it here—Item 2D. And so I feel like we should probably pull that just in case they want to speak on it.
E as in elephant?
2D as in dog.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Is there anybody else that would like one of those items removed to the regular agenda? Seeing none. Commissioners, do you have any objections to any of the consent agenda items? If none, I would first entertain a motion to remove Item 2D to the regular agenda so that we can then approve of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move 2D to the regular agenda.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, 2D is removed to the regular agenda. Denise, please, let's go through and read that item again for the—actually, let's move on to the regular agenda approval. Sorry.
Approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you. Thank you. My apologies. We will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Perfect. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Seeing none, we will now move on to the next item.
Item 4 is regular agenda approval.
Can I get a motion to approve of the form of the regular agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no? That has passed four to zero. Please read the next item, Denise.
Item 2D is a petition rezone 0136572021, rezoning from the AG Agriculture District to the CN Conservation, RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban, LW Live Work, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density, and C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar Districts located south of West Maple Street and west of North Marion Road.
Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Norman Engineering. It's owned by the Sesher Family Trust. It's located on the southwest corner of West Maple Street and North Marion Road, just east of McGovern Middle School and just west of the new Jefferson High School. It's about 152 acres in size. The applicant is looking at rezoning this 152 acres for mixed-use development, some commercial and live-work along North Marion Road, some apartments up along Madison and Marion. There's some single-family and townhomes in the center portion of this lot, and then also a significant conservation area to handle a lot of the drainage that comes through this specific area. The proposed zoning does meet the Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan. With this area with having the significant traffic of the new Jefferson High School and McGovern Middle School to the west, this zoning plan does make sense with putting the commercial on the first intersection of the arterial and then also allowing some live-work and apartments along the intersection of both major arterials. Therefore, the staff does recommend approval of this rezoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jason. Commissioners, any questions for Jason? Seeing none. Is the applicant here tonight? Please step forward and state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Eric Christensen. I live at 909 South Torrey Pine here in Sioux Falls.
Thank you, Eric. Please tell us about the project.
So what we're trying to do is develop this—this piece of land kind of over by the new Jefferson High School, which we feel is going to be in need of definitely some growth out that way. Doing quite a bit of single-family, which I'm a single-family builder, so that was what I'm looking forward to over there is the single-family lots. We do also have some RD2 stuff, which is intended to be twin homes or potentially villas in there. And then the commercial just seemed to make sense on the corner there where we've got kind of access to the school and then the live-work and apartment. Just seemed like a good fit along North Marion Road there and Maple, so.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions tonight for the applicant? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is anybody from the public here to speak on this item? If you are, please step up. State your name and address for the record. Yep, come forward.
Hello.
Hello, I'm Nathan Pitts. I live on Team Street, which is the very far north street. I just have concern about the water conservation area because we—I know there's a stream that runs back there directly to the north of us as well, along with that conservation that they want. I just want to make sure that doesn't get torn out before it's evaluated, if that makes sense. Because we're—that—we're on Team, and then I see that the conservation area there, but there's like a stream or something that runs like north and south right there, south—northwest. So that's my only concern.
Very good. Thank you, Nathan. I'll ask the commissioners if there's any questions for Nathan. Seeing none, we—once we're done with public input, we'll bring somebody up to the city to address that. Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak to this item? Please come forward.
My name is Megan Schmidt, and I live at 5408 West Team. I have some of the same similar concerns. I just would caution you to—maybe can we get the conservation survey or whatever it is called done prior to approving this? Like you said, that kind of runs east and west behind Team Street. I'd like to see a little bit more what that shows before this is approved.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Thank you. Anybody else here tonight to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close public input on that item. But Jason, if I could get you back up here and maybe talk about that conservation zoning and maybe let us know what can and cannot be done in that area?
Yeah, you can kind of see—if you look at this rezoning plan, actually, you can kind of see how the conservation—that drainage channel runs from the northeast there. You can kind of see how it loops around and then runs down this way and continues to run southwest. As part of their preliminary subdivision plan, the engineers looked at that and figured what they needed for a conservation area. You can see the little hatched-out line in there. That's the special flood hazard area, so that obviously can't be built in at all. And they do have quite a bit of buffer going east and west of that. And I know they've done significant drainage studies within this land—or this area just because of some of the downstream things. And I know Aaron's here if there's any more specific questions about what they looked at with that aspect, so.
Very good. Thank you, Jason. Anybody have any further questions for Jason or Aaron? If none, I will entertain Commissioner Action.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 2D.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on this item. Commissioners, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I think—and I can appreciate the concerns of the neighbors with drainage. That's always a big concern. It is in my neighborhood, too. I know that engineers are required to meet a lot of standards, both to accept rainwater and to let it flow through the site as it was before it was developed. And so I have a high confidence in our—both the engineers that are involved with this project as well as the city engineers verifying that they are doing those calculations and making it so that it will function well. And if anything, it'll function better than it currently does. And I—I would guess that that will be the standard that they will be held to, that it will not get any worse than it already is and will likely improve significantly. So I'm in favor of this. I have confidence that they'll get that straight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we will take a vote on this item. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. That item has passed four to zero. Denise, please read the next item.
Item 5A, petition rezone 0135152020, rezoning from the O Office District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District located at 4803 South Sunny Mead Circle.
The applicant is requesting to defer this one more month to the March meeting. They continue to engage the existing office businesses that are to the west and north and really coordinate and buffer yards and future development with those offices, so.
Thank you, Jason. I have a feeling the applicant is not here, but I will ask just in case they are. And I will also ask if anybody from the public is here to speak on this item. Seeing none, we will close public input on this item. I'll look for Commissioner Action.
We'll defer all to our March meeting of this item.
Second.
The motion and a second to defer this item to the March 3 meeting. Any further discussion, Commissioners?
Thanks for clarifying that, Mr. Chair. Just the date of the meeting is the 3rd, so.
We will take a vote on this item. All those in favor of deferral signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no? That item has been deferred to the March 3 meeting. Denise, please read the next item.
Item 5B, petition conditional use 0136212020, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 2800 East Marson Drive.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, fellow Planning Commission folks. Adam Roach, Planning Development Services. The applicant is Becky Bauer, representing Bauer Enterprises. The request is to allow video lottery terminals supplemental to on-sale alcohol at the gas station on Southeastern and East Marson. There are sensitive land uses adjacent to the site. That's what triggered this conditional use permit. There's some single-family homes located within 200 feet to the west and 100 feet to the south of the existing C store, and Lyons Centennial Park is located 200 feet to southwest of the site. Our public agencies reviewed the plans and didn't have any concerns at this time. And because the applicant held—the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting January 28. They had one attendee, and the concerns were more societal in nature than land use. The applicant is proposing to operate a casino from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The proposed on-sale alcohol beverage establishment meets the criteria of the comp plan. The site is located on a minor arterial and minor collector. Low-intense office uses are adjacent to the site. Appropriate buffers and setbacks were provided when the—when the structure was built, and they do meet the required parking of 18 spaces, which is available on-site, and a security management plan has been submitted and approved by the police department. Because this applicant has provided clarity on the proposed use, nature and extent, work on the proposed application, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit. And the applicant is here if you have any questions, and I can answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Adam. Commissioners, any questions for Adam?
Is this a—an established building already? Is this going in the gas station there? Or will this be a new structure?
Correct. It is an established gas station, and it will be walled off within the gas station.
So it'll be built on to—to make it larger?
Within the existing.
Within the existing.
And the applicant can explain their construction concept to you.
Very good. Any further questions for Adam? Seeing none. Is the applicant here? Please come up and state your name and address for the record. If you could also tell us a little bit about your project here, that'd be great.
Becky Bauer. You want my personal address?
The business address is fine, and I think you're fine.
2800 East Marson Drive. Oh. So we just wanted to put a video lottery casino in our existing C store. We currently have one in a C store in Brandon, and it helps generate some revenue and thought it might be a good idea here, good fit.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for Becky? I don't see any. Thank you, Becky. Appreciate it. Is anybody from the audience here tonight that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will close public input on this item and look for Commissioner Action.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 5B.
I'll second that.
The motion and second for approval. Any further discussion on this item, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, it looks like a good fit for the location already. As noted in their written security plan, they already sell alcohol as part of their existing business. The changes they're going to make here, I think, make sense. So I'll be in support of this one.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion?
Do we have any, like, information or statistics about the—I mean, the park being right across the street? Is that going to— Is it going to attract any kind of, you know, danger to the—the park? I know there's a daycare right across the street from the park as well. Do we have any more information on that?
So our Parks Department does receive our information from the Planning Commission. They did not have any concerns with the proposed use adjacent to the park. And the daycare and the school do not fit within the buffer of the sensitive land uses.
Thank you, Adam. Any—any further discussion tonight on this item?
Mr. Chair, I, too, am in support of this. It seems like a pretty straightforward adjustment to their current business plan with the presentation of their security plan and adequate parking. It looks like it's well-suited for this, what I would consider a fairly minor adjustment to the building, so I'm definitely in support of it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote on this item. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no? That item has passed four to zero. Denise, please read the next item.
Item 5C, petition subdivision plan 0135142020, preliminary subdivision plan for Sunny Mead Edition located at 4803 South Sunny Mead Circle.
This is the preliminary subdivision plan that goes along with the rezoning that the applicant requested deferral, so we are requesting—or the applicant's requesting this be deferred to that—to that March meeting, so.
Thank you, Jason. I know we don't have the applicant here, but is anybody from the public here to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will close public input on this item and look for Commissioner Action.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to defer Item 5C to the March 3, 2021, meeting.
I'll second that.
The motion and a second to defer this item to the March 3 meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the deferral signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no? That item has been deferred to the March 3 meeting. Denise, please read the next item.
Item 5D is a petition. It's a tax increment finance number 23 project plan.
Good evening, Commissioner Dustin Powers with Planning and Development Services. Today —or tonight, what we have for you is a project plan for tax increment finance district number 23 to the City of Sioux Falls. The petitioner for this is the Sioux Falls Development Foundation, which is the nonprofit economic development partner of the City of Sioux Falls, and representatives of that organization are here tonight to also speak on behalf of the item after we get through the presentation. With any TIF, the Planning Commission's role is to look at both the project boundaries or the district boundaries as well as the project plan. If you recall back from September of 2020, we did bring those district boundaries forward to the Planning Commission for approval, and those were approved and recommended to the City Council. The City Council did approve those boundaries on September 15 of 2020, and those boundaries are shown on your screen. The intention of creating the TIF was really to utilize the future positive tax increment generated from future projects in the district to expand the development and shovel-ready sites of Foundation Park North. When we define Foundation Park North, we're really looking at the area north of the railroad tracks that's included within the district. Typically, when we bring forward TIF in front of the Planning Commission, typically you would see both the boundaries and the plan presented to you at the same time. Most of the TIF requests that we receive in the city are more site-specific, one project, but this is a little bit different in that we're really looking at a whole entire development park. You know, 540 acres are included within the tax—TIF 23 district. So really, the purpose of creating those district boundaries early on was so that we could really set the base and be able to establish the district so that we were ready for any new developments that were occurring. And at the time last fall, there was a lot of strong interest in—from economic development projects looking to come to Sioux Falls and really looking at Foundation Park and this area. And so what we did is we established those, knowing that we would need to wait for one of those projects to come forward so that we could actually establish a project plan and bring that forward. And that's what we're really here to present to you tonight. And we've seen some momentum in the park. Obviously, there was the announcement of Amazon, and that's started development already. There's been another recent announcement of CJ Foods looking at this area as well and the property within the district. So again, that momentum's generated now. We understand kind of the numbers and the needs to establish and develop the park, and so that's what we'll present to you here tonight in the project plan. So when we look at the TIF district, when we created it, there's nine parcels that are located within the district that currently collect $70,000 in property taxes. Based on what we know from the Amazon project that's under construction, plus the future developments that we are projecting to occur on the remaining 460 acres within the district, we believe by the end of the 20-year TIF period, we'll be collecting $13.5 million of tax revenue on—within the district. And what I would say is that's a pretty conservative number based on—if we actually projected out what all 460 acres would look like, we're actually thinking that number's going to be about double that number at—you know, once this is fully developed out. But in the plan, we—we do be conservative so that we can show that the—that the TIF is financially feasible and will pay off. So really, the difference between that original $70,000 when we created the district and that future tax dollars that'll be generated from those future developments and future investments is that tax increment. And that increment's what's going to be used to pay for the cost associated with the development that's discussed within the plan. So the Sioux Falls Development Foundation is requesting $94.3 million plus financing cost to really develop and build out the needs of the park and Foundation Park North. And those include the infrastructure improvements and the site prep. It includes the plating, sanitary, sewer cost recovery, engineering, financing costs, and it includes something that we'll talk more about, the Economic Development Competitivist Fund. So the funds that are from the TIF will go to support the preparation of that 460 acres that remains north of the Amazon sites that's in the boundaries. That 460 acres totals of 350 football fields, so just to give you some size comparison of how large this district is. Also, another good comparison is if you looked at our downtown district, which is basically from Falls Park to 14th Street, Minnesota Avenue to Franklin, in our downtown is roughly 450 acres. So the district itself at 540 and the remaining land of 460 that we have to develop yet is larger than our entire downtown. So what do we need to provide shovel-ready industrial land? What you'll see in the plan is—is funding for roads, water, sewer, a lot of grading, some regional detention, additional rail sites. And again, all of these improvements are over for—to really open up 460 acres of industrial land for development. One of the other main items and costs associated with the TIF request is the Economic Development Competitivist Fund. The main purpose of that is to strategically support future identifiable costs that are located within the district that are—and are associated with increased build-out associated with Foundation Park North. So what we're allocating to that is $30 million through the TIF. What that could possibly go towards is some of the potential uses is when we have site-specific improvements. So really, the infrastructure that we just went through on the previous slide is really just to open the park, just to get the park ready for— just to open the park, just to get the park ready for development. But it's not really build-ready for each individual company or development that comes within the TIF district. So each individual site will have its own needs, and so those things could include additional grading. We're really only rough grading it with getting it shovel-ready, but to really get it build-ready, that could mean additional grading. It could include things like upsizing or capacity of water and sewer lines that, depending on the industry, that could need to be increased just for the capacity reasons. So again, a number of items, any of those items we identified on the previous slide as, as uses of the TIF already, all of those items could be reasonable site-specific items as well. Also recruitment and retention of businesses. You know, who is the next company that's going to come to Sioux Falls and to Foundation Park North? We don't know what those needs are going to be for each of those individual companies. So again, this fund is really to give us the tool to be able to answer those questions down the road. And we know, as we continue to grow as a city, we're no longer competing with peer cities that are the same size as us. We're competing with the Kansas Cities, Omahas, Des Moines are all examples of cities that we're competing against with these economic development projects. So again, this will allow us to be competitive with those projects as we compete against those other cities. And for oversight of the program or for this specific fund within the TIF, there'll be representatives of both the city of Sioux Falls and the Sioux Falls Development Foundation that will get together and, and take a look at the, these future expenditures and identifiable costs, and review those and look to approve those moving forward. So when we talk about the project plan, South Dakota codified law requires a number of sections. There's about 13 different items, I believe, that have to be addressed within the plan. So we're not going to go through everything in absolute detail, but I'm going to go through each of those items just so you're aware of those. And then after each item, each bullet item is the section that's referencing the project plan. So if you're flipping through your project plan, you can see the section that references each of these. So we look at, obviously, all the public works and improvements that occur within the district. The economic feasibility study is really looking at, is the TIF feasible and will it pay off? The detailed list of estimated project costs, or all those project costs we kind of went through with the EDC fund, and all of the infrastructure improvements, as well as those other ancillary things like the engineering and finance costs. Fiscal impact statement, it really looks at, when this development occurs, what will be the impact on all the taxing entities that are associated, which would include the city, the county, the school district, as well as the water district associated with this area. The description of the method of financing, so this will be a developer-funded TIF. So what that means is that the Sioux Falls Development Foundation will actually take the risk on financing all of these improvements, and will be liable and responsible for paying for all those improvements. And then that tax increment will go to pay them back. Also included in the project plan is just maps, maps showing the existing condition, which you've already seen on the screen, showing the proposed improvements that's included in your plan, and includes all those infrastructure improvements we discussed. Any zoning ordinance changes? We're not requesting any major changes with that, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in the future. If there's going to be any changes or request of changes to our master plan or our building codes, any of those things, that has to be included in there, which there are not. Listed estimated non-project costs, so when we look at a TIF district, the non-project costs are typically the actual individual company costs. So when you look at that, there's a, an estimate in there, about $2.5 billion is what we're projecting of private investment to occur within, over this 460 acres moving forward. And then also a statement of whether or not we're relocating any individuals. There's no existing individuals living in the district, so we're not relocating anyone. So also, we talk about the TIF eligible expenses. So this is what the funds can actually go to pay for, or the tax increment can go to pay for. So we've kind of went through all of these a little bit. We've talked about the infrastructure and site preparations. That totals about $50.4 million. That includes 26,000, over 26,000 linear feet of industrial roads, sewer and water. There's 500,000 cubic yards of dirt that will be moved as part of the general grading of the area. And again, that's just really to provide shovel-ready industrial land of 460 acres. There's the plating and sanitary sewer cost recovery, engineering, finance costs that total $52.3 million. And then there's the Economic Development Competitivist Fund that we just spoke about for $30 million. And you can see all of that broken out on the right-hand side of your screen. Ultimately, all of that totals $132 million. The TIF request again is for the $94.3 million plus some of the cost of financing. So also in the TIF plan, one of the things we look at is just fiscal impact on the taxing entities. And typically, what we do within the plan is we really just look out at mid-course. So, you know, this TIF being established in 2021 here, look out a few years of when we know everything's kind of stabilized, and look at what the new taxes would generate for each of the taxing districts in the future. Again, this is looking at 2027, so what we know today is the current property taxes are $70,000 out there. If you look at our projections within the, the TIF plan, and we look at 2027, we're projecting $7.9 million to be, being collected across that property. And you can see the distribution to the taxing entities there. And then ultimately, if you look all the way out to the end of the TIF, at year 20, we're projecting that number actually to be for 13.5 million again. So again, we're just showing some of the financial and fiscal impact and the financial feasibility of that by showing this chart here. So what are some of the things we review from a city staff perspective when it comes to TIF evaluation? Obviously, we work with whoever the petitioner is to review the project financials. What is some of the gap necessitating the TIF? What are their needs? Why, why do they need the amount that there's being requested? We look at the uses of the TIF funding, and we've went through that a few times now with the infrastructure, some of those fees associated with development, as well as the EDC fund. And then we also look at the significance of the project and the economic impact. And so when you look at, you know, this being an industrial development park, what are some of the things that, what's the benefit of this TIF and what's the economic impact? You know, this provides, again, that, those shovel-ready sites, which basically opens up 460 acres for development. All the future projects that go in there will increase the tax base and the property taxes collected. And then each of those companies that are going to be bringing that, that growth in tax base are also going to be bringing brand-new jobs to the city of Sioux Falls. And so there's direct job growth associated with that as well. And then ultimately, when we look at any TIF, we look at, you know, will it stimulate and develop the general economic welfare and prosperity of the state? And when you look at, again, job growth, tax base growth, something that we don't list up here, but with every construction project and then their operations moving forward, their sales tax collected on all of that, which will ultimately benefit not just the city, but the state of South Dakota as well. So when we look at a project plan, what are the actual considerations we take into, we look at when looking at a project plan? The two main things that we have to, to make findings on and to consider are, are they consistent with the comprehensive plan, and is the project plan feasible? And so when we look at the, the district and the area, you can see our current zoning map on the screen. The majority of the lands, all of the land south of the railroad tracks that some of was when, within the district, and some of it is the remaining portion of Foundation Park, is already zoned industrial. What we'll see, and what you'll see in the coming months, is that actually the land north of the railroad tracks will be coming in for rezone, to rezone those properties to industrial as well. And so knowing, when looking at our comprehensive plan, we know that this has been identified as a heavy industrial use area for the city. All of this land's been annexed in, and ultimately, all of it will be zoned to the appropriate zoning classification needed to house the users and the companies that'll be coming out here in the future. So again, we believe it meets both the shapes Sioux Falls ordinance, as well as the comprehensive plan. And then in terms of the feasibility, if we went through those numbers, again, we're projecting that, based on the tax increment and the revenue that'll be generated, we'll easily be able to pay off the $94 million-plus financing within the 20-year period of the TIF district. So again, there's, staff is recommending support of the project and the TIF as presented. What I'll ask from you tonight is that if there is approval of this item, that we make a motion to adopt the project plan for tax increment district number 23. And then we also need a motion to recommend approval to, of the project plan to city council. If that happens, what we'll be recommending to city council beyond just the project plan is we'll also be bringing forward a TIF development agreement that'll be with the Sioux Falls Development Foundation, that will really define the limits of the TIF, which would be the $94,371,313 plus financing, and then the uses of that as well. So again, there's, there's several more items after this, and after your guys' review. But again, I'm here. Jeff Eckoff with the Planning Department is here, has worked on this as well. We have Bob Munt and Mike Gray from the Development Foundation here as well, that can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Dustin. Commissioners, any questions?
Very thorough presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. We will bring the applicant up next. Bob, if you could come forward, that'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you. My name is Bob Munt. I'm with the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. Dustin did a great job of kind of walking us through all the things that have happened and all the things that still need to happen. But I also want to introduce a couple of people behind me here. Pat Costello is the chairman of my board, Pat right behind me there. And then we have the honor of G O D, GOED Commissioner Steve Wester here in the back there as well. We have been constantly keeping them up to speed on what we're doing here and working with them on the projects that you've seen announced over the last several months. We have a great partnership going with GOED, the city, the county, and we just really hope that you can really take a look at this plan tonight and recommend that approval to the city council. We're excited about this kind of taking us to that next level of where Sioux Falls can and will be in the future. We're excited that we're able to use this mechanism. It's the first time this community's going to be using it, but I think it's the right thing to do, and I think we'll see some great results in the future. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those at this time, and if I can't, I'll have Dustin or somebody help me with that. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Bob. Commissioners, any questions for Bob? Seeing none, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Yep. We will open it up to public input at this time. Is anybody here that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we will close public input on this item, and we'll go one at a time here on a motion, so I will look for a motion to adopt the project plan.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the project plan for tax increment finance district 23, item 5D.
I can second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioners, discussion on this one?
Mr. Chair, I think this, it's a well-considered project. It's already got momentum. We don't see that often in cities that have this kind of advanced planning. This has been planned for a very long time. Bringing quality industry to a city like Sioux Falls is a very great goal, and it seems like things are working well already, and it seems like this project will advance that goal even farther. So I'm in support of this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further Commissioner discussion on 5A? Sorry, item 5D, A, the motion to adopt the project plan.
Mr. Chair, I would just add that I'm also in support of this project. I think it's a tremendous growth opportunity for our community, and I'm excited to see it come to fruition.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we will vote on the motion to adopt the project plan. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. The project plan has been approved four to zero. I'll now look for a motion to recommend approval of the project plan for TIF district number 23.
I'll move to recommend approval of the project plan for tax increment finance district number 23, item 5D, part two.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any further discussion on that?
Mr. Chair, just to echo the comments from the motion to adopt the project plan, it's, it's very impactful, the fact that it will be ready for this degree of development and basically going to guns on that level of, of economic benefit to the city. It's incredible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on the motion to recommend approval for project plan for TIF district number 23. All those in favor, please vote by signifying by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. Item 5D has been approved in full. Denise, please read the next item.
Item number six is public input on non-agenda items. Five-minute comment period per individual.
As always, we like to have time to have anybody from the public address a non-agenda item. Is anybody here from the public that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, I will close public input, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion.
Second.
A motion and second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. We are adjourned.[1791.91][1791.91][applause]